Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special event applications.
The first application before you is for the Porch Fest to be on September 10. Next is the Cycling for the Center on September 24th, Sunset Lake Cleanup on September 10, the Thanks For Giving Splash and 5K on November 19. Bethel Church is requesting to do a baptism on September 10. Cross at Orange has several dates in September to use Kennedy Park for wedding receptions. And lastly, the Asbury Park Healing Together Wellness would like to hold a fair in Springwood Park, excuse me, on September 25. Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Kendall.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Well, I'm gonna do it since Lisa's here. I just want to thank you for doing an outstanding job, you and the Recreation Commission, on the camp. My son was a part of it. They had trips three or four times a week, from Liberty Science Center to PAC, to our local trips like Hot Sand. So, great job on the Asbury Park Recreation Summer Camp.
Mayor Moore.
So, I'm gonna give a public service announcement. As long as I can remember, I've been reading the Asbury Park Press. I continue to do so, I don't know why, it's just habit. But, so, twice a year, they put in sixty-some pages with twenty-five thousand names of people in New Jersey that are owed money. And years ago, before social media and everything, you used to have to do everything snail mail. And, but I would go through every name and call people and say, "You're owed money, you're owed money." So, it came out last Friday, it'll be in tomorrow's paper, and you don't have to do snail mail anymore. It's very easy. All you have to do is go to State of New Jersey, Department of the Treasury, Unclaimed Property Administration. You type in your name, and it'll tell you if the State of New Jersey owes you money that they're holding from five years ago, ten years ago, twenty years ago. So, I put this out, and Donna's been working with the Senior Center to help our seniors hook up for this, because a lot of seniors don't have computers. Now, they recommend you do it by computer, you can still do it by regular mail, but there's like millions and millions of dollars sitting there. People don't claim it. It goes to the State of New Jersey. And people in the past, I know, have gotten a check for like $2.51. People have gotten a check for $27,000. People have gotten a check for $68,000. This past Friday, all the names were listed in the paper. I sent it to a friend, and they said, "Well, I checked my wife's name, she's not in the paper, but she's on the list." So, Amy Quinn's getting money back from the State of New Jersey. She's not telling me how much, because she doesn't want to give me a percentage, but this is again for everybody out there in TV land and everything that is watching this. Again, it's very easy to do. If you need help, you can go to the Senior Center, and we'll gladly help. If anybody wants to call me at home, I'll help you, like I say. I used to read every name and call everybody I know, just to recover this money. Now, it's very easy. Just go right online, type in your name. And again, there was one person that said, "John, my name wasn't there, but twelve of my relatives were." So, please take advantage of this. It's your money, it's owed to you. The State of New Jersey's gonna take it and use it for something stupid, so please look it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the City Manager.
I have nothing, Lisa, thank you.
Thanks. Matters from the City Attorney.
Yes, nothing at this time.
Thanks. We're now on to the public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thanks. Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there'll be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Good evening. My name is Lakisha Johnson, representing my mother, Deborah Walker, who's a resident of Asbury Park. We were here last meeting, and I just want to say thank you to Mayor Moore and the council, people who met with us regarding my brother's murder. My brother was murdered in Asbury on July 28, and his murderer is still out there. So, I just want to say thank you for meeting with us, and I know it's the fir-- I know we weren't able to solve the world's problem in that one meeting, but I do believe it was a step in the right direction, and we are looking forward to continuing meeting and our efforts to combat gun violence in Asbury Park. And so, we'd like to invite every councilperson and those attending the meeting tonight. We will be marching in Asbury tomorrow, Thursday, August 25, at 7:00 PM, beginning on the 1600 block of Soul Avenue. So, this has to be a partnership with not just our family, but the community in which we live, those who lead us, those who elected officials, and those who call Asbury their home. So, we hope to see you out there with us in our peaceful protest, which is just the beginning. We want justice for my brother, and we also want to be able to make a difference in the city of Asbury Park.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And thank you for meeting with us. I thought it was a productive meeting. I think we made some headway as far as even internal organization, where we got to figure out a better plan where how the city responds. So, I know we've helped with get out flyers and everything as far as this. I know, I've seen it on Facebook, and I've personally shared it all over the place. And again, you're absolutely right, there's so many, I'm not gonna say a hundred people in Asbury Park, but there's more than five or 10 people in Asbury Park that knows what happened, and nobody's coming forward. So, I apologize, I'm not gonna be able to make your march tomorrow night, but I just have a family obligation, but I'll be there in spirit. And again, anything we can do with the family, please continue to reach out, and I know the Police Department's been working together with you. So, again, sympathy, best wishes go out to you, and appreciate you meeting with us and telling us, so we learned and we can correct mistakes on our end. Thank you.
I also would like to just comment, and I truly, from my heart, appreciate the way you went about things. You could've came in and, "The council ain't this, the police officers ain't this," and made a whole lot of racket, unnecessary racket, which we all are trying to solve this problem. But you showed a lot of class, even though you was hurting, and I'll just thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Good evening. Randy Thompson, Help On Handcuffs Incorporated. Just a couple of points. Last time I was here, we spoke about the Asbury Park Police Department released personally identifying information of hundreds of arresteds under the drug war for drug paraphernalia arrests. I was assured that protocols were put in place, that policies were changed. So, I received an email from City Attorney Fred Raffredo, as well as all of you who are copied on it, I believe, that these were called strict protocols. I'm just asking here for clarification. I want to view those protocols to see what they are. Unless I have the title of the document, I can't request it from the clerk. So, is that the title of them? Strict protocols? Because I don't want to wait seven days to find out that it's not the title.
Fred and Donna? I mean, what's the answer?
I can go on to my other questions if you want to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Randy, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, the second point, we just passed the two-year anniversary of Hosseh Best being murdered, gun violence by Asbury Park Police Sergeant Sean DeShader, the cop with the second highest rate of violence. It's also a front-page news story by one of our journalists here. So, I'm glad to hear that you're reading the Asbury Park Press, Mayor. They're waiting for justice. They're waiting for anything. The internal affairs system does not work. And so, I would like to ask you, in addition to Hosseh Best, in addition to Officer Steven Love harassing members of the community and mauling two people with a flashlight on Main Street, in addition to three of your officers who are now back on the job sodomizing Sleek Hinton, are you introducing civilian review legislation or no? That was the second point. So, we've got the strict protocols, we got the, excuse me, the civilian review. Third point, you have purple flags out here honoring victims of overdoses? That is a direct functional output of the drug war. Drug prohibition causes those overdoses. So, I want to ask you, will you please recognize that the drug war is an excuse to attack people who have, excuse me, darker skin than me, okay? And poor people, and brown people. Are you not going to address that it opens up the door to human rights abuses by police and devastates communities like Asbury Park, but exploit their memory by planting purple flags? So, you got the strict protocols. Are you gonna do civilian review? Will you recognize the intersections of the drug war? And lastly, I'm gonna say this as delicately as I can, I'm so sorry to the relatives of beauty, I did not know the man, but I just want to highlight a point, and forgive me if this, if this is not what you wanted to be highlighted, I will retract it, but if you don't have trust in the police, which you have not put policies in place, people don't trust the police around here. There've been multiple murders over there on the West Side. Where I now live, I Oprah requested the 911 calls. You know how many 911 calls there were? Zero. They don't trust the police. You're causing these types of murders by devastating this community with these policies. I look forward to your answers.
First one, I'm gonna still turn it over to Donna or Fred, like what do you want Randy to do?
So, I can, I can comment on the first item that Randy brought forward, because when he did send that communication to the city, I did respond after having discussions internally about the release of the information that had transpired. And Asbury Park, as you know, does have an Oprah Council, and he is now involved in every single instance where there is a release of police documents to ensure that there will not be a further instance where information of that type is released to the public. I do not know that there is an actual document that reflects and memorializes the new protocols, but if there is, I will certainly make sure that we get a copy of that to you.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I have been advised that Oprah Council is now much more involved with review and determinations prior to release of information.
Appreciate it.
Okay, as far as your second question, as far as civilian review board, you know the answer. So, I mean, you know the answer, because when we were on Ridge Avenue having a press conference, you interrupted the press conference and kept on talking over the speakers, talking over the speakers, and we finally said, "I'll answer that question when we're done." And you finally let the press conference finish. I told you, yes, we're interested in a CRB. I told you the problems. The Attorney General has gutted the procedure, and like we're in a standstill. We did an equity committee, which I thought was very useful, that we learned a lot about. And now, we're in the process of setting up a board, and I've told you that day, with pastors, Pastor Jennings and other people are gonna be on it, looking into, so when we get an Attorney General that's willing to like reopen it, and maybe, I don't know if we'll ever get subpoena power, but at least we can open up the civilian review board, but right now, our hands are tied, but we are starting to investigate it.
You can call for it. You have a voice, you can call for it.
We are, we are. Okay, Randy, I'm not gonna take any more cross-conversations. I'm answering your questions. As far as the drug war, you're absolutely right.
Thank you.
The amount of deaths.
Thank you very much.
Opioid is unbelievable, and it goes up every day. If you knew how many like calls our fire department or police department called for every day, and how many knocks on, whatever they give, and save so many lives, it's just in Asbury Park, and we're 1.6 square miles, 16,000 people. I mean, imagine like a big city. It's ridiculous, and it's gotta be in, when you read in the newspapers that big drug companies paid a $9 billion fine because of what they did and how many people they killed, if they will to pay a $9 billion fine.
My question was about police being predatory by drug companies.
Right. As far as the purple flags, I didn't know whether they were anti-that, so, thank you.
Thank you for your response. And just remember, you had the leadership to perform gay marriages when it wasn't legal, and call for marijuana legalization. I'd just like to see that same courage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Annette Harrell. I am a resident of the West Side. I'm not gonna give my address, of course, but I do live and reside in Asbury Park Village. Okay. My first comment, or my heart goes out to the family that just lost their son, and their uncle, and their brother. It deeply goes out more than a lot of people, because the fact that we can't just look at that one loss. We gotta look at many losses, and nothing was done about it. And the cases were just cases, and I'm basically gonna say, because of the color. This is the first problem I got. I've been here many a times, I have said many a things, I've had meetings. I've had one meeting that still has not been addressed, and that's with the City Manager. So, my assumption, my, me, I'm not gonna assume anymore, I'm basically gonna say that she does not care to even engage into another meeting, or make it right from the first meeting she had with us, okay? You have to show interest, you have to show what you speak about. It can't just be words. The second thing is, yes, the Police Department need to get, they need to get on top of a lot of stuff. We come here time and time again, talk about the same things, generation after generation, but the only, it seems like the only race that's being affected by it is the color folks. We are sick and tired of being sick and tired of the system and the city disappointing us and failing us in every way. Little programs and this and that, things that y'all do for us, yes, that's fine, that's a pat on the back, but that's not solving the real true issues that we have. Our side looks horrible. This, the West Side looks horrible. The East Side looks the way you want it to look, because y'all chose that. It's not that, oh, okay, well, we come and we speak about certain things, and y'all address it, it's just to hush us up, to put us in the places that we are now. And it's time for all of us to rise up and come together and do what needs to be done as not only a race, but a community. It shouldn't be no color in this whole town, but it is. It's live and real, and y'all need to face the facts and acknowledge that, and do something about it before it's too late. That's basically all I have to say. And as far as you, the mayor, listen, you do have a voice, you need to step up. The City Manager has a voice too, but sometimes you have to go and address things in a stronger, aggressive manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrell. And--
Are you gonna address?
What?
Are you gonna address that?
I'm gonna answer a question, yes, but--
Okay.
You're done, yes.
I know.
I, I thank you, but I mean, I'm a little bit confused when you say, "I should address things," because two or three years ago, you called me many times, and I met you either at Springwood Park, I met you in the conference room, and we had numerous conversations, and we tried to solve problems. So, for anybody in the city on the east, west, north, south, any side to say, "Mayor Moore does not return phone calls and does not address situations," I take personally, I think that's an out-and-out, you know, fit, just because, I mean, you're a perfect example. How many times you called me, and how many times I met with you.
I didn't say that, though. You putting words in my mouth. I did not say that.
You said I should step up more. I step up--
Yes.
Whenever I am asked to meet with anybody, whenever anything tragic like this happens, I step up on any problem. I've gone to events at Randy's on Cookman Avenue, helping handcuffs. I mean, I go, any, I'm the most successful mayor probably in the damn state, if not the country. So--
I beg to differ.
For you to say that I have to step up more, please call me, please reach out, and I will meet you anytime, anyplace, we'll talk about any subject from A to Z, and that goes to everybody here in the room, and that goes to everybody out there in TV land. And it's always been that way, and it kind of hurts that you would say that, especially after how many times you and I have met one-on-one. Thank you.
I understand. I'm not trying to, let me just say this one thing. I'm not trying to hurt anybody's feelings, especially you, Mr. Moore. I'm just saying for facts, like you said, we have met many a times, but the same issues are still there. That's all I'm saying, they're still there.
Okay, Annette Harrell, you're done. The facts, the facts and the issues that you called me to talk about, we're taken care of. So, other issues are still there? I totally agree with you. To say, if anybody says like, "This city's perfect, we don't have problems," is a lunatic. We have problems, and we have to address them, and we do address them. But the facts that you called me about, we're taken care of. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Calm down, it's okay.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Not seeing anyone.
Second.
All in favor? Public participation's now closed. We are now on to the minutes. I have the Municipal Council Executive Meeting minutes of August 10, and Municipal Council Regular Meeting minutes of August 10. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2022-362, a resolution approving special event applications. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022--
I forgot Jesse.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-368, a resolution authorizing change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant review and alternatives analysis project. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-365, a resolution authorizing the repairs to the sewer plant truck.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-366, a resolution authorizing transmission repairs to Department of Public Works Truck #666. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-366, a resolution authorizing transmission repairs to Department of Public Works Truck #666. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-367, a resolution approving change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant review and alternatives analysis project. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022--
I forgot Jesse.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-368, a resolution authorizing change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant carbon media replacement project. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-369, a resolution opposing the proposed increases to the state health benefits program. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-370, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to execute a license agreement to permit a limited encroachment into the right-of-way area adjacent to the property located at 903 Emory Street, Block 2705, Lot 12, relating to an existing retaining wall along Emory Street. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-372, a resolution authorizing and/or ratifying the execution of a temporary site access agreement with Asbury Partners LLC relating to 1611 Ocean Avenue, Block 4307, Lot 2. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
371 was--
Oh.
Thank you. You're welcome. Resolution 2022-373, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city council to execute a discharge of mortgage for properties located at 509 Third Avenue and 614 Second Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
I'm sorry.
373?
No.
This is the discharge of mortgage resolution.
No.
Councilmember Kendall.
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
No.
We're now on to the public hearing. At this time, City Attorney Frederick Raffredo will give a brief overview of the matter to be heard.
Thank you, Lisa. This matter comes before the mayor and council this evening pursuant to an application for a person-to-person transfer of the inactive liquor license that is associated with the Monmouth Lodge property located at 1101 Asbury Avenue within the city. The proposed transferee is Asbury Landmark Liquor LLC. Under the law, liquor licenses may be transferred either from person-to-person or place-to-place or both, so long as the procedure set forth by law is followed. Any proposed transfer of a license in Asbury Park is subject to the review and approval of the mayor and council in your capacity as the local issuing authority. As part of the transfer process, notice of the application must be published once a week for two successive weeks in a newspaper circulating in the municipality in which the license premises is situated. Proof of publication must be furnished to the city clerk. In the within matter, notice of the application was published in the Asbury Park Press on July 28, 2022, and August 5, 2022, and an affidavit verifying such publication has been provided to the city clerk. The law states that following advertisement, if a written objection is made on behalf of an objector, the matter shall be set down for a hearing, and all parties shall be notified accordingly. By letter dated August 5, 2022, the city clerk received a written objection to the proposed liquor license transfer from Richard C. Skiria Esquire on behalf of John H. Morris, the former exalted ruler of Monmouth Lodge number 122, and requesting that a hearing be held prior to council action in accordance with the law. As such, the matter has been set down for this evening, and all interested parties have been duly advised of the time, date, and location of this evening's proceeding. In anticipation of this evening's hearing, the city has received several written submissions from attorneys acting on behalf of interested parties. Those submissions include the following. The first is the letter I referenced previously dated August 5, 2022, from Richard C. Skiria Esquire on behalf of Mr. Morris, alerting the city to the objection and requesting the hearing. The second was a letter dated August 10, 2022, from Richard B. Stone Esquire on behalf of Monmouth Elks Lodge number 122 of the Improved Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks of the World and Pride of Asbury Temple number 64 nonprofit fraternal organizations. This letter contained a number of enclosures. And the third was a letter dated August 23, 2022, from Mr. Skiria on behalf of Mr. Morris, which also included a number of enclosures. Importantly, all of those communications and their enclosures have been provided to the mayor and council for their review and consideration prior to this evening's meeting. Since Mr. Skiria filed the objection, when we open the public hearing, we will afford him the opportunity to approach the mayor and council and make his comments first. We will then allow the other interested attorneys to be heard if they so choose, including Mr. Stone on behalf of the lodge and Pride of Asbury Temple number 64, and then Eugene O'Connell Esquire, who represents the proposed transferee, Asbury Landmark Liquor LLC. After hearing from all of the attorneys involved, we will then open up the floor to hear from anyone else in the audience who may wish to be heard regarding this matter. I would ask that if anyone who is present here this evening is represented by one of the three attorneys whom I mentioned who are present this evening, that you kindly refrain from speaking individually and allow your attorney to convey your sentiments. With that said, I will turn the matter over to the city clerk so that the public hearing on the proposed transfer of this liquor license may be opened.
May I have a motion to open the public meeting, open the public hearing of the meeting?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And with that, I would like to ask Mr. Skiria if you'd like to come forward and approach the mayor and council and express the objection that your client has filed.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Richard Skiria, attorney of the law from the handling even of the right. I represent the objector, John Morris, and am here today on behalf of Mr. Morris to present the objection to the liquor license. I just want to make clear first as to the scope of the objection. Mr. Morris does not object to the sale of the liquor license to the new buyer. Mr. Morris would agree that a resolution should be entered allowing the license to be transferred to the new buyer. What we're here for today, Mr. Morris is objecting to who are the proper owners, the seller entities of the liquor license. That should be reflected on the resolution. And as Mr. Raffetto stated, I provided some information on that, and I will just submit a brief submission, I'll make it as brief as possible, concerning the support of our argument. So just by way of history, as Mr. Raffo mentioned previously, Mr. Morris was formerly the exalted ruler of the lodge when it opened in 2012. He was formerly removed as the exalted ruler by the National Chapter of the Lodge on April 4th, and by way also of court order on August 2, where they confirmed removal by order. Currently, Morris's removal and claim for damages against the lodge is subject to litigation. It's an active litigation case in the Moth County Superior Court. However, we're here today before the council to be heard in this limited license, limited objection of the liquor license before it's transferred, as I stated before, on who are the proper owners and entities of the license. Just some brief history so the board understands the context of where our objection is coming from. In 2012, the lodge, four years previously, was abandoned, and Mr. Morris was asked to take this position and voted as the vocal exalted ruler of this lodge. Him along with other persons of the lodge, rehabbed the lodge, which was damaged by the fire, paid the insurance. As part of that, the prior owners of the lodge left an outstanding balance with the liquor license distributor had to be paid by Mr. Morris and by the lodge entity in order to upkeep that liquor license, which was inactive. If you look at the history of the liquor license from the lodge and going back to resolutions from this board in 1970, 1987, 1988, and so forth, the lodge was the sole owner of the liquor license at that time. However, in 2012, after the lodge was reestablished, the Pride, I would say, attempted to maneuver or tried to establish that they also had record ownership of the license as well. Just from background, the Pride is also an owner of the real property at 1101 Asbury Avenue as well, which they've been owner along with the lodge. Mr. Morris, not knowing this history and this situation, would certify to this board that the Pride and the lodge are the record owners, and submitted those certifications in 2013 and 2018. However, further research after that, going to 2018, showed that the Pride was never owner of the license. There was no history adding the Pride. What has to be done under ABC regulations and liquor license law is any owners have to do a formal transfer. Anyone that has to be added to the liquor license has to do a formal transfer to be added to the license. And looking at that, there was never a formal transfer. We don't know how the Pride established ownership of the lodge. Therefore, Mr. Morris in 2019 filed a verified petition with the ABC showing that and clarifying that the lodge is only the prior owner, not the Pride. This council recognized the resolutions from 2018 through 2021, which was submitted in our packet as well, that the lodge was the record owner, not the Pride. The ABC also had some clarifications in the liquor license corrections to show the Pride is not the record owner and was removed. However, as the council knows, in May of this year and June of this year, there was a correction and a name change, and this council added the Pride as a record owner of the license. So as we're here today, their last resolution that was enacted to renew the liquor license does have on record from this council, the lodge and the Pride as the record owners. However, we submit respectfully that that was an error, that the lodge is only the record owner and not the Pride. And the reason why is there was no establishment of a formal transfer to the Pride, no establishment, no documentation to add the Pride as a record owner. There was correspondence back and forth, petitions back and forth, wait, this isn't correct, the Pride needs to be added, now they're removed. So, but that's not the standard. The standard here, and the burden is on the Pride, I would submit, to show that there was a formal application, there was a formal transfer in addition to add them onto the liquor license and be an owner on the liquor license as well. Going into the law and looking at the regulations there, the ABC regulations would provide a change in the license number. If there's an addition, the license number ending 001, which is the original license number. If there was an addition to the Pride, as an additional owner, that license number would change, and there would be a different number showing the formal transfer of the lodge. I'm sorry, formal transfer of the liquor license to the Pride. There would be publication, notices in the paper, and all the interested parties saying that the Pride should be added to the license. Moreover, the Pride is an auxiliary. They're a separate entity from the lodge, they're not part of the lodge, they're auxiliary. There's no evidence they have a formal tax identification number or file separate taxes, and we would submit there also not a recognized entity that can be added to the license. So what's our relief here and why are we here today? So we just submit here that, request that this council, when assuming that the resolution is approved, to transfer the license to the new buyer to show that the transfer is from the lodge only, not the lodge or the Pride. And why is this relevant? Counsel could be saying, "Well, you know, it's going to be sold anyway, so it's not going to be owned by the lodge or the Pride." It's very relevant as to the history of the case, as to Mr. Morris's authority in not the end of liquor license, which is a claim against him. It's very relevant as to the proceeds and how the proceeds are distributed there. And the, again, that has to be established by record, and this is very relevant to the case. And all we're here today is just to request that the board look at the history of the license, show that the Pride, even though this council now has the lodge and the Pride, can look back to the history and show there was no formal transfers, no formal addition to add to the Pride, and that it should be a transfer just basically from the lodge as the sole record owner to the new buyer. Unless the council has any further questions, I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Stone, would you like to come forward?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Richard Stone. I'm from the firm of Stone Mandy. I'm here today. I also have my law partner here who may answer questions with regard to the liquor license. First, I want to thank Mr. Raffetto, who worked hard in assembling this group so that we could expedite this hearing tonight. We have been in contact with Mr. Skiria throughout, so what he has told you tonight, no matter how articulate, I have to take some issue with, and I will explain that to you over the course of the next few minutes. I'll try not to take too much time. You should know that in the brief history that I've been involved since about 2020, it was clear that there were two factions that were part of the Elks Lodge here in Asbury Park. By now, I'm sure you're all familiar with the fact that Monmouth Lodge 122 represented the men, and the Temple Pride number 64 were a group of women. At some time prior to April of this year, Mr. Morris had what appeared to be ostensible authority to act on behalf of the lodge. We questioned that. But that was not only questioned by me on behalf of the collective group, but starting in or around December and January, December of '21 and January of '22, there was the Grand Lodge that is bound by the Constitution and its bylaws and regulation. The Grand Exalted Ruler, who counsels over 500,000 members of the Elks, also counsels 1,500 lodges throughout the world, was, became personally involved in the supervision of the lodge here in Asbury Park located on Asbury Avenue. Why did he do that? Because there was a conflict between the men and the women. And I was involved in about 2020 in regard to the dispute that then existed between those two factions. I'm happy to report to you, Mayor, because I thought that this was an issue. Those two factions have now solidified as a result of the appointment by the Grand Exalted Ruler, Mr. Pope, who's in North Carolina. There was an investigation done here in Asbury Park about the lodge here located here. And that, that investigation was done by Mr. Willie Seabrooks, who's also here. He's the grand investigator. And as a result of his findings, there was a hearing. And at that hearing, the Grand Lodge, not the courtship, but the Grand Lodge, removed Mr. Morris from his ostensible position in, as the Grand, as the exalted ruler of Asbury Park. In addition to that, and this becomes very important, there was an appointment of a committee, a committee of a group management team by the Grand Exalted Ruler. And that committee was made up of six members to manage the affairs of this very important organization, because many of you should know that it's a philanthropic organization. It's fundraiser. It generates scholarships. It plays a very important part of the city of Asbury Park and the surrounding towns and cities. So it was important to maintain not only the existence of the lodge here in Asbury Park, but also this very physical plant, which I'm sure many of you know is located on Asbury Avenue. There were some simultaneous problems that the Grand Exalted Ruler and the committee had to deal with. The first one, which I wish to bring to your attention, was that there were funds borrowed with questionable authority by the lodge orchestrated by Mr. Morris. That was supposed to be a construction financing. It was financed by a private lender. It went into default, and it went into foreclosure. As I appear before you today, I was able to negotiate, I represented, I was able to negotiate with the attorney representing the private lender to forestall the foreclosure share of sale that was initially scheduled in June of this year, so that if that had occurred, the property on Asbury Avenue would have been lost to a share of sale. That would have been catastrophic. The only functional asset of the company, of, not the company, excuse me, of the lodge was the liquor license. We were fortunate enough that the liquor license was under a contract of sale. The first contract of sale was dated either in 2019 or 2020. That contract of sale only had the men's section of the lodge, and it, and the women objected to it. They wanted to know why they were participating in the sale of the liquor license. The buyer of that original contract terminated, terminated that contract. Thereafter, it was brought to my attention, as initially representing the women, that the property on Asbury Avenue was in foreclosure, and that indeed, the liquor license had been negotiated and sold without the express authority of the women, and more importantly, without the express authority of the Grand Exalted Ruler. Under the Constitution of the Elks, all financial relationships, borrowing, selling, purchasing, anything financial, has to be approved by the Grand Exalted Ruler and the Grand Lodge. And we took the position that it had not been done. There was a prior lawyer involved, Mr. Jared Freeman. I communicated with him, and I asked him for some records to show what was on that sale. We came to learn that there was a contract, not in the name of both men, but only in the name of the Monmouth Lodge, which were the men's group. I wish to remind you again that there is now a committee dealing with the finances of the Asbury Park, the Elks Lodge here. I started a suit in the Chancery Division here in Monmouth County before Judge Quinn. Now, Mr. Skiria has been my formidable adversary, but we don't agree on a lot. And I'm going to point out a few things to you that he provided to you, that I provided to Mr. Raffetto. Mr. Skiria has indicated to you that his client does not object to the transfer. The purpose of the transfer is to get the funds to satisfy the obligation to the creditor so that the foreclosure will be withdrawn. I represent to you that as late as today, I spoke to Michael Alfury, the attorney for Lynch Financial, and he's agreed to cooperate, of course, once you receive the pay up of that obligation. When I started that litigation, it was necessary to accumulate information so that the court here in Monmouth County could make a decision. Mr. Skiria, I respectfully disagree with, that he's asking you to make some decisions with respect to this liquor license that really is now being litigated in Monmouth County. If there is a question about the chain of title with respect to the liquor license, and he is concerned with who owns what, it either has to be satisfaction of the ABC, or it's got to be to the satisfaction of Judge Quinn, who are now in the law division. Mr. Skiria provided Mr. Raffetto with the information, which I heard early on, that was provided to each one of you council members. I'm not so concerned with the information he provided to you. I'm more concerned with the information he withheld from you. And I will ask you at the end of my presentation to form your own opinion as to why information was withheld. He told you, he didn't provide this to you, but as part of the package that I gave to Mr. Raffetto, I initially gave him two applications for renewal. One application was in 2013, and one application was in 2018, two of them. In each one of those applications, I would refer you to the certification plate, page, there is a statement under oath by Mr. Morris indicating and confirming that the name that the liquor license was in is in both names. It's in the Monmouth Lodge and the Temple Pride. Now, that was his certification. I didn't ask him for that. Nobody induced him to do that. But he now stands before you with a very eloquent attorney indicating to you that somehow that was a mistake. If it was a mistake, I would respectfully submit that under the law, he's a stop for raising that issue. But what did he do after that? I commenced a suit, and in that suit, there is a request, one of the many requests, but one of the requests is that they have asked Judge Quinn to withhold money from the proceeds of the sale to escrow it as a result of claims. Judge Quinn denied that application outright. In one of the letters that Mr. Skiria wrote to the council, he asked you to do the very same thing. He said, "I don't mind that you transfer the license. I want to make sure that there's clarity as to who owns the license and where it's vested." There was another piece of property, not another piece, the real estate part of the asset base of the lodge. There's an issue as to who owns the vested interest in the real estate. The title searches all confirm that title is vested in both names, consistent, I would respectfully submit to you, that it's consistent with the ownership of the liquor license. When Mr. Skiria provides you with a package, what he doesn't explain to you in detail, which I intend to, he forgets to tell you that the liquor license that he attaches that has Xed out, I hope that you've all looked at that. There's a liquor license that predates the one that you presently have, that Xes out or redacts the name of the Temple Pride. I would submit that that was a clerical error, and I can establish for you how I can prove it a clerical error. After that document was forwarded to the ABC, which it has to go to for approval, the ABC rejected it outright. And why did they reject it outright? Because all of the records that satisfied the ABC in the state of New Jersey confirm that the liquor license is in both names. So they sent that redacted liquor license back to the city clerk, and there was a resolution that was authored by, at the direction of the council, that was authored by Mr. Raffetto. And in that resolution, and it's Resolution 2022-248, and I sent that on to Mr. Raffetto, it clearly says to correct the licensee as is Monmouth Lodge 122 to add the Pride of Asbury Temple 64. The very purpose of that resolution. The very purpose of that resolution was to correct the clerical error that was provided at the insistence of Mr. Morris to the ABC. The ABC rejected it and now have accepted that the liquor license is in both names. That didn't satisfy Mr. Morris, because what he did after that, he marched himself down to the ABC, presented himself personally there, and tried to convince the ABC that the city made another mistake. They did not. You now have the resolution correcting the liquor license. You now have the liquor license, which Mr. Syria did not provide to you, for whatever reason, you'll have to ask him why he didn't provide it to you, but he didn't provide to you the resolution, and he didn't provide to you the corrected, a license holder. I respectfully submit again that if Mr. Syria, on behalf of Mr. Morris, wants to dispute the vested interest in the liquor license, it's, that case is now pending before the Superior Court Law Division in Mammoth County. But for the purposes of tonight, there can be no contradiction. There could be no inconsistency. The liquor license that needs to be transferred tonight to salvage the property for the Mammoth Lodge and the Temple Pride should be transferred, and I welcome any questions that you or anybody else have, and I thank you for the time that you provided. And I do, I must thank Mr. Raffetto. He's worked tirelessly in trying to analyze all of this information, and I hope that I've answered some of your questions.
All right. Now, Mr. O'Connell, would you like to be heard?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I represent Landmark Hospitality Frank Whiteller, and he is the purchaser of this particular liquor license. Start by thanking Melody for her help in getting me through the application process. Thank you very much. When John Morris signed the contract back in February, he was the Exalted Ruler of the Mammoth Lodge, had the authority to sign the contract, and we signed the contract and relied on his representations that he had the authority to sell the license. We now find, after reviewing everything, I did get a copy of the 2021 renewal license, and it did have Pride crossed off, which caused me some concern. I asked a question to a prior attorney, and I really didn't get a sufficient answer. So, on behalf of the, the buyer, who really is, wants to use this license very quickly in Asbury to rehabilitate the carousel and the powerhouse building on the waterfront, we would ask the board that it should be transferred in both names. I think Mr. Stone made a very strong argument for that, and I would ask that the council act on it tonight.
Before we open up to the public, if anyone else here would like to come forward and address the council on this matter, do any of the attorneys want to make any further comments based on anything that any of the other attorneys have said? Okay. Not seeing that any of the attorneys are coming forward, is anyone else who is present here this evening, would anyone else like to come forward and make a statement to the mayor and council?
My name's Jackie Mary. I am a real estate agent with Berkshire Hathaway here in Asbury Park, and I am the person that signed the contract for the liquor license back in 2019 with the Mammoth Lodge, as well as 2022 with the Lodge and also the real estate property at 1101 Asbury Avenue. I have just a small tidbit of information to add to the gentleman that were here before, and I'd like to just...
You're going to have to speak up a little bit.
Speak into the microphone, run closer to you. You can move it. There you go.
Okay. Hello. Hello. The addition to the liquor license with the Pride happened in 1998 by a clerical error made by Mr. K., who I don't know personally, but I do know that he was the city clerk at the time. So, the liquor license was obtained in 1908, and from 1908 to 1988, it had only one name on it. That clerical error was found by the ABC Mammoth County Representative, whose name is Anna Perna, also by the posse system representative, I'm not sure what her, her, her position is, but her name is Amy Loeb. And when we discovered and found those documents with just one name on it, the ABC, Anna Perna, Amy Loeb, gave permission to the Asbury Park City Clerk, Melody Harts Grove, to make the change to a single entity of the Mammoth Lodge. When I asked Anna Perna if that was going to be on, on her docket to make that change from two entities to one entity in June of 2021, she said in an email that I have provided to the city clerk, also to the city attorney, that specifically states that it will not be part of the, she couldn't do it right away because she had too many transfers and documents to take care of after the June council meetings and transfers, but that Melody would have the authority to make that to one party, which is why there are Xs on the liquor, on the liquor license certificate, because she Xed out on the authority from the ABC. Anna Perna was transferred in December of 2021 to another location within the, within the ABC. And Abigail Steiner took, took Anna's place. And when she came in in January, she said, "Why is this liquor license have one name on it when it should have two names on it?" Because Anna Perna never made the change in the system that she was supposed to do in June of 2021. That change went unmade until I had a conversation with Melody, unfortunately, I know, I'm happy for her, she retired, but had a conversation with Melody in April, of which I provided her with all that documentation that showed that she could change the liquor license. She said, "I have to talk to the city attorney about it. I cannot make this change on my own." Fast forward to everything that you've heard this evening, and the liquor license was renewed in June by Mr. Stone's office, and there was a resolution changing the one-party name back to a two-party name that should have been a one-party name. And here we are. I feel like everybody has said something, but nobody actually got right to the point of exactly when it happened. I, I have the documents, I've made all of my emails, I've provided all the emails to everybody, and here we are with an argument that's, you know, lawyers and money, and it should have just been one name. That's what I have to say. So, does anybody?
What was Anna Perna's job title?
She is the ABC Mammoth County Representative, who was transferred to another county and is now back representing Mammoth County.
And then Abigail Steiner?
Abigail, Abigail Steiner took Anna's place, but then she left the whole government.
But both of them had a boss over them at ABC that ultimately made a decision.
Well, Amy Loeb and Anna Perna both found the documents for me. There was, they don't keep documents past 10 years, they don't have to, and there's no microfiche, I guess, but we were able to dig out real documents from 1988 and 1991. We don't know where anything else is around that time that actually only has the Mammoth Lodge on it. So it was put in, the second name was put on in error by the city clerk of Asbury Park. And that's, that's the story.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, my law partner, who is a bit more familiar with liquor license, he'd like to introduce us, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. I'll, I'll be brief. The reason I want to address you is because what I heard was not actually correct. I've spoken to Anna Perna many times. She's still in licensing with the ABC. So, I went to renew the license for the Lodge and the Pride coming up for the 22, 23 term. When I did that, I looked into the posse system, and it showed that the license had never been renewed for 21, 22. When I contacted Anna Perna and the ABC about this, because they have to renew that before we can renew for the next term, I was told it was not renewed because the resolution incorrectly only had one name. So I immediately contacted Melody, with Anna copied on the emails, and indicated this and said the resolution needs to be corrected to both names as that's what was on the prior license. Once we got that done, we were able to get into the system, get the 21, 22 renewed, and then file the 22, 23 application. That's why we had a corrective resolution and then a new resolution for 22, 23 with both names. When we filed the 1239 petition for the renewal, which is needed if you're inactive for more than two years, the ABC issued it in both names, directly from the ABC and the director. I believe also one of the exhibits back in 2013 contained a letter or a clearance certificate for the renewal in 2013 from the state of New Jersey in both names. So we're not talking that it came out and went back in, came back. It's been consistent since 2012, or prior even, when Mr. Morris certified that those were the owners, under oath. That's all I have to add.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to be heard before we close the public hearing and the mayor and council consider the liquor license transfer? Okay, please come forward. And are your comments specific to the liquor license transfer?
No.
Okay, we had an open public comment period for anything else earlier on this evening, and that time has closed. This public hearing is just on the liquor license transfer, so I'm sorry. It does not appear that anyone else is coming forward to make a statement during the public hearing on this matter, so...
Motion to close the public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is now closed.
So, at this time, mayor and council, you may consider taking action on the application to approve the person-to-person liquor license transfer to Asbury Landmark Liquor LLC. The resolution that I drafted and that was in your packets, after the now therefore clause, it says now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park in their capacity as the local issuing authority, and following the hearing held on August 24th, 2022, do hereby determine the following, colon, and then I left a blank so that you could determine, having heard the statements that were made this evening at the public hearing, how you wish to move forward, and the action either being to approve the application to transfer the liquor license or to deny. And if a council member makes a motion to move this resolution forward, I would respectfully ask that you indicate whether your motion is to approve the transfer or to deny it. And then presuming that motion gets a second, you can engage in discussion if you wish, and then move forward with a vote.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-374?
So, I would like to move Resolution Number 2022-374 forward with the language added after the now therefore clause stating that the mayor and council hereby approve the transfer of the liquor licenses, and that we direct the city clerk to take appropriate actions accordingly.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Well, before, is there any discussion before you move forward with a roll call? I just wanted to give you that opportunity in case you want to discuss it, otherwise you can move forward with a roll call vote.
No disagreement?
No. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay. If anyone doesn't...
The transfer of the liquor license has been approved.
Thank you. Anyone who doesn't have anything else, we're on to adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. May I have a second to adjourn?
Second to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.